Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School Board of Education meeting for June 5, 2023. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters related to the employment history of particular pedagogical employees and nurses collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have Boy Scouts in the House, so we're going to ask them to lead us in the pledge. So can we, welcome to the Yorktown Board of Education meeting for June 5, 2023. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? We're going to ask the Boy Scouts to do that. And then remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Jennifer Stroud, the mother of Donna Morales, the father of Jennifer Newman, the father-in-law of Sharon Rivera, the father-in-law of Teresa Deingenis, the mother-in-law of Linda Arco, the grandparent of Julie Wong, and the grandparent of Ashley Anacano. I'm sorry. Do we have Boy Scouts? Can they come up to the podium?
The United States of America and the civil republic which stands on the nation, under our infinite liberty and justice for all.
We apologize for coming out later than we anticipated. We have good news tonight. Dr. Hatter?
We sure do. We have two wonderful celebrations. We are celebrating two fantastic groups. One group of students who were in our science research program and members of, we call it school partner recognition night. It's a very special night. We're celebrating all of you, people who so thoughtfully, so generously donate your time, volunteer your time for the school district to make our school community a better place. So tonight, we say thank you to you. So I'm just going to take the rest of the presentation from the podium. So good evening once again. We sure do apologize for starting the meeting a little later. I know some of you have young ones and bedtimes are certainly pressing and for our students, I know you have some studies to return to. So we'll begin this evening with our science research program. Yorktown High School has one of the most prominent science research programs. I don't want to say in the county, I don't want to say in the region, but it's well-regarded across the world. And in fact, we did have a student participate on the world stage just this year, placing second in his category, but we'll talk about that in a little more detail later on this evening. I am so proud of this program and I'm so proud that we're able to feature the program and the accomplishments of our students to you, our school community, and certainly to our audience watching at home. This evening, I have with me our science research teacher, Mr. Paul Rubio. I just want to take a moment before I invite Paul up to just commend Paul on the work he has done in that program. He had some very big shoes to fill in replacing someone who was legendary and synonymous with Yorktown Science Research, and Paul has done just an outstanding job. The enrollment in the program is up, the excitement in the program is revitalized. It is a wonderful, wonderful program to be part of. Many of our students participate in other activities throughout the school district, whether it's in music, the performing arts, sports, and it's so wonderful to see our students excelling in the classroom, specifically in our science research program. So at this time, I'd like to invite our science research teacher, Mr. Paul Rubio, to the podium to introduce the students and to share with you a little bit about the competitions in which the students performed. Mr. Rubio?
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Thank you to the Yorktown community. Thank you to the Board of Education for your support of the program. I'm just going to say a few words and then I'm going to call some students up and recognize their accomplishments. We are really thrilled about the year that we've had. We're thrilled about the future that we're going to have. We've had students, as Dr. Hatter mentioned, presented regional, national, and international science fairs this year and had success at all levels in the program. So many of our students are coming home with awards, are coming home with experiences that they can talk about and share with rising students. And we're just so excited to have a program that's growing to over 70 students next year. So we're really expanding, we're growing, and we're doing great things. A few, actually, I just wanted to mention these before I bring up specific students. This weekend, this was after our meeting to honor the students, but this weekend, we had the summer science fair, which honors sophomores in their research plans, and more than half of our students medaled there, several taking home first-place awards that did phenomenal work. We also had the tri-county science fair that we found out after we met that Akshaya Ravi, I just wanted to give a shout out to her, one-third place in that as well. So congratulations to her and to our sophomores as well. Let me tell you about a few of the fairs and then we'll call up some individuals to honor them. So we do many, many fairs. I could, I'd go on for a long time if I talked about all of them, but just a couple of highlights. We have the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair and the New York State Science and Engineering Fair, which are ISEF-affiliated fairs, the International Science and Engineering Fair. And we actually, through that, sent one of our students, who I'll talk about in a few minutes, to the International Science and Engineering Fair, which is basically the Olympics of science research, where our student actually won on the world stage and won second in the world in his category. So really exciting work happening. We're going to be going up in less than a week now to Genius Olympiad in Rochester, which is another international science fair, and our students, four of our students qualified as finalists and are going to be competing up there on the world stage as well. Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, our seniors presented there as well. And there are lots of other small fairs I could talk about, but we do so much and our students are sharing all of their work and all their innovation with the community, with the national, and with the world stage. So we're really, really proud of them. And so I think I'll start just calling up students now. We'll start with our Westchester Science and Engineering Fair winners. And so, are we going to order this list now? Oh, thank you so much. So I want to start with, yep, with NICEF, the New York State Science and Engineering Fair, and we'll start with Nathan Gutierrez, who won honorable mention. Eric Song, who also won first place and is spotted ISEF through the New York State Science and Engineering Fair. And Aidan Hirsch, who won honorable mention as well at the New York State Science and Engineering Fair. So congratulations to these students. Congratulations. We'll move on now to the Regeneron Westchester Science and Engineering Fair. So we have Sophia Nastasi, who won second place in environmental science. Congratulations, Sophia. Alyssa Wong, who won third place in neuroscience. Aditya Weddicker, who won fourth place in computational biology and bioinformatics. Param Amre, who isn't joining us tonight, but we wanted to acknowledge his success. Param. Makino Ishikawa, who won the Innovations in Biological Science Research Awards in Neuroscience. And then Abinayar, who won Today's Students Tomorrow's Engineer Awards in Engineering. Couldn't be here tonight also. He also won honorable mention at NICEF, so congratulations to him. Next, we have the Regional Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, and Raka Bose won fifth place in her regional room. Congratulations, Raka. And Raka was also an STS top scholar. We have the Local Westchester Rockland Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, and Nathan Gutierrez also won first place in his category. Great. All right. And then finally, we have our Genius Olympiad finalists, who are going up to Rochester next week to compete on the world stage. Zainab Sharif is a finalist. Coming up, Zainab. Devish Dubey also is a finalist. Aidan Hirsch is a finalist at Genius Olympiad. Sophia Lamb is a finalist as well at Genius Olympiad. And Eric Song is also a finalist at Genius Olympiad. And last but not least, certainly, we wanted to acknowledge the big one, the International Science and Engineering Fair. And so we had a student this year who went down to Dallas, Texas for eight days to compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair and won second in the world in his category. That's a worldwide competition, people from all over, from China, Asia, Europe, everywhere in the world competing here, over 80 countries. And Eric Song won second place in software system software. Thank you again, Dr. Hatter. Thank you for the board for giving me the time today to speak with you all.
So the program has been absolutely extraordinary. The results have been incredible. This is actually a list of the results from the summer science fair that took place on Saturday. The number of students who were recognized for their efforts is just remarkable. The program's future is bright. It's thriving, it's flourishing. Mr. Rubio, thank you. Students, thank you because you're what makes the program great. So I thank you for all your work. To the families, I just want to say thank you to the families and to the volunteers, the mentors. But for the families, it's a big commitment. To have your child in science research is not an easy commitment, and I thank you for supporting your children through this journey. They don't get here without you. So students, I'd like you to give your families a round of applause. And we have such wonderful members of our community. There's a picture here of a member of our community who invited us in to IBM, and there are such great resources within our community and without. And thank everyone in our community who so generously opens up their doors to our students. And my thanks to some of the parents who are here who welcomed our children into IBM and to so many other facilities. Please know we see it and we appreciate it very much, so thank you. At this time, for our science research students, we're going to transition into a celebration of our school volunteers. But I know you all have homework and tests and the whole, you don't get to present internationally by staying out and celebrating school volunteers. So if you need to head out, you may do so at this point. I thank you. I just asked that you do so quietly through that rear door. Thank you. And now to our school volunteers. I just, we can go back to the agenda. This is a special evening for our district. Not only do we have the opportunity to honor some remarkable students, we're so fortunate to be able to celebrate such wonderful volunteer organizations that support the work of our schools, which in turn ultimately supports the children of the Yorktown Central School District. This evening, we'll be honoring each group as part of our school partner recognition night. This night means a whole lot to me personally. It means a lot to me professionally. You all can be volunteering your time in so many other areas. You don't have to be here, but we're so grateful that you choose to be here. On behalf of our entire Board of Education, my entire central administration, and the entire school district, we say thank you to you. We really appreciate the commitment that you demonstrate, not just for your children, but for all the children, all toward the goal of just improving the experience for children who walk through our school doors each day. Your service to our district is so deeply appreciated, and everyone is just so busy. Everyone's so busy. I'm sure you look around at your meetings, it's the same faces who are showing up to volunteer. And when you need someone to, whether it's work the table at the First Nighters event or the concession trailer at an athletic event or a PTA book fair, you may find yourself turning to the same group of people. We thank you. Everyone is so busy. We appreciate you finding the time to be here for the children of our district, for our school district. So tonight, we're going to acknowledge each group. We're going to call each group up, and just like we discussed for most of the groups, and many of you have done this, this is our sixth year hosting this school partner recognition night. You'll recall that we'll ask you to just say a few words, anything that you're most proud of for this school year. If you wish to pass, you certainly may pass, and we certainly appreciate anything that you wish to share with our district. So at this time, I'd like to begin with our district PTSA, and I'd like to invite President Ron Fideli and any members of his executive board to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Thank you, members of our Board of Education, our school principals, our assistant principals, our administrators, and anyone who is here to serve our children. I've always considered it a privilege to be a member of a PTA and serve as a president. We give back to our community, and like Dr. Hatter said, this is, you know, for the most part, people like Lisa Buchalo, Anisa Muzusi, and Karen Sessner who's on our board, this is what we want to do with our free time. We want to give it back to our children and your children. We're very proud of very, you know, many of the accomplishments that we've been able to follow through with this year, but I think most evident was bringing back the Harlem Wizards. You know, we had to take a pause for a few years and we were able to bring Harlem Wizards back, and it just shows the partnership that the PTAs have. That involves all of the six units, our five building and, our five building units and SEPTA coming together, planning, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and we were able to have a really wonderful event. We had two shows and we made over $22,000 in profit for our six PTAs and the district-level PTA. So we're quite proud of being able to do that. Again, I want to thank all the people who are behind the scenes, especially our school custodians. Any of our events are not possible without our custodians, so we thank them, our cafeteria staff, you know, the people who maybe don't get all the kudos, but they deserve the kudos because they're here too for our children. So again, thank you very much.
At this time, I'm delighted to welcome Jessica Bynes and Jamie Collins representing SEPTA to the podium.
Thank you to Dr. Hatter and the Board of Education for hosting this night, and thank you to all the building staff and administration for all your support over the past year. I'm Jessica Bynes, in case you didn't know, Vice President, Acting President of Yorktown SEPTA. Looking back over this year, some of our greatest accomplishments are, we helped pay for the bubble bus for last year's summer ESY. We provided two adaptive swings, one for Brookside, one for Mahansik. Brookside's trip to Lakeland Discovery Center. We will also be giving the high school, middle school, and Crampon a $1,000 building grant, as well as additional funds for Mahansik because they didn't go on a second trip. We have two student grants, one in a district, one at a district, totaling of $1,000 each student. We also helped with the Pioneer League end-of-year party and the DJ for the dinner dance for the Pioneer League. We are truly grateful to collaborate with the entire PBS department, notably Caroline Almeida, Kelly Riddick, Stefania, Tricia, Jen, Lori, and Teresa. We want to, we want to especially thank Mike Rosen for, sorry, lost some spot, oh, considering he will be retiring after this year, for all his support and unwavering partnership to ensure SEPTA remains a strong force in our community.
Sorry, I know it's not typical for two people to speak, but this is kind of Jess and I's last go at SEPTA this year. We will be officially off the executive board, so I got to take a minute. Over the past five years, SEPTA has proudly contributed to helping the students in our district flourish by providing funds to the buildings in YCSD, which has in turn created the opportunity to enhance the curriculum. Each year, SEPTA pushes the envelope and continues to challenge itself as an association to increase our monetary support to the staff and children within the Yorktown Central School District. We are so proud to say that SEPTA has contributed over $26,000 to the district within the past five years. SEPTA is a district-wide PTA, and we thrive with the support of our partnering PTAs within the district. To each of you that sit on a board at one of our building's PTAs, the PTSA, along with FFE, we thank you all wholeheartedly for your support throughout our tenure. Jessica and I have devoted ourselves to SEPTA's mission since we revitalized the PTA back in 2018, and we couldn't be more proud to watch SEPTA continue its important work of providing resources to the teachers, families, and most importantly, the students of our community for the years to come. Thank you.
I was just telling Jamie, I remember that meeting in my office in 2018 when we discussed this idea of starting up a SEPTA for our school district and how wonderful that concept was. So I thank Jessica and Jamie for their years of service. You built this thing from the ground up and you built something wonderful, so thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Yorktown High School's PTSA to the front podium. Maria O'Connell, President; Lisa Buchalo, President-elect; Lori Kinsaga, Secretary.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maria O'Connell, the President of the Yorktown High School PTSA. Lisa Buchalo and Lori Kinsaga have been on the board with me for many years and very excited to turn the reins over to them in my last year on the PTA. We are very, very proud of all the events and support we give to the high school, but as you know, at the high school level, it is very different than in the elementary schools. We're not typically on hand working with the children. We're supporting things financially, we're arranging things behind the scenes. However, we did get the opportunity this year to go into the cafeteria and share a wellness activity with almost all of the 1,000 students in the high school. We did a worry-free bead bracelet, kind of like a fidget spinner, that the kids could put together and keep in their pocket during testing times if they got a little nervous or anxious, stressful, and it was a huge hit. Watching these 15- to 18-year-olds sit in the cafeteria at the high school with their arts and crafts project, acting like kindergartners again, made my, oh my goodness, 24 years of volunteering in the PTA, it was perfect. It was perfect to see them go back to their childhood and go back to arts and crafts. So we are very proud of all the things that we do for the high school and for the district, but that will forever stick in my mind, seeing that they're all still big kids at heart, even when they're growing up and going off to college. So thank you very much. Thank you to the board and Dr. Hatter for this evening, and we're glad we're able to gather again and come into the schools. A little bit of normalcy, it's all good. Thank you.
Maria, thank you. Next, I'm honored to welcome the Mildred East Strang Middle School PTA co-presidents, Michelle Bendlin and Daphne Packard, Vice President, Roseanne Brackett. I'm not sure if I saw Roseanne. Okay. Megan, come on up.
I would like to thank the entire Mildred East Strang Middle School Board, chairs and committees as a whole. Working alongside such a strong team makes me sad to leave, this is my final year as well, but thankful for the opportunity to learn and grow from this experience. I am grateful to have had a role in rebuilding a strong PTA community following the pandemic, and I am happy to see the return of events and kids' smiling faces in part because of the positive contributions we have made together. Michelle has been the best co-president a co-president could ask for. She is a motivated action planner and talented communicator. I am so thankful to have had her this year, achieving our initial goals and much more. Our board was comprised of the following amazing women this year, Roseanne Brackett, Megan Whalen, Lynette Sanfardino, Anisa Muzusi, and Megan Goldstein. All of these great women have been slated to transition to the board positions for the 23-24 year, so the team momentum will continue on.
We also just wanted to say a special thank you to Ms. Horowitz, Ms. Copeland, and Mr. Rupcheck for all your support this year. It has been a great year, and coming out of the pandemic and being able to do many more things at the middle school with your support has been wonderful. And a special thank you to our custodial staff for all their help, because without them, I'm not sure if International Night would have been as successful, because they did really do a lot in all of our events, but especially International Night. To the parents who support, who support us, who volunteer, who donate religiously to different events, thank you for your support. And our children, thank you. It has been a really great year. And lastly, thank you to Daphne. This is her first year being on a board, and she is leaving because her son's going into ninth grade, but high school, you guys should call on her. She's been wonderful. Oh, thank you to everybody. It is really great. A few things that our school has kind of added to the things that we've done post-pandemic is we've added in a seventh-grade dance. We have some events called Fun Fridays, and we've continued the Camp Nabbie event that just happened, and as well as our eighth-grade dance. So we're still doing some things for the students and hoping to give back even more next year. All right? But thank you so much for all your support and for the board and Dr. Hatter.
Thank you.
And next, we're delighted to honor the Crampon PTA co-president, and I know Aaron Ropke is not able to be here this evening, but I'd like to welcome Mr. Fideli to the front of the room. Corinne, Maria, Jessica, Erica, Kristen, please join us at the front of the room.
Thank you again, Dr. Hatter, and the board. You know, this, this group of volunteers is just a group of friends. You know, these are, these are people that, over the years, we've grown to love each other. Aaron Ropke is a phenomenal volunteer, a phenomenal person. Corinne, who else at midnight will text you and say, listen, can we get this done? Sure, absolutely. Kristen, you know, a little bit new to the boards, but jumped right in and did whatever we asked as our treasurer. Maria O'Connell, Erica Dugan, who's not here, and Jess Bynes, who should be up here as our delegate. Again, we have, we have our group texts and our chains, and it's all, again, focused on what can we do that's safe, educational, and fun for our kids. This year, again, as, as Daphne just said, it's been wonderful to get back to what we used to do. So we had KJK again this year. For those of you who don't know who that is, that's the performing arts group that comes in and in two weeks takes fourth and fifth graders and transforms them into actors and actresses. And, you know, the chairs of that spent two weeks, many, many hours behind the scenes even before, to planning it, and the culminating event, the play, was just, I was at one of the performances. It was unbelievable, Frozen Junior. So thank you to all those volunteers. Thank you for Dr. Robert's support, Mr. Advic's support. In anything that we've wanted to do, it's always been, let's figure out a way to do it together. So I thank everyone who's, again, behind the scenes, our custodians, our cafeteria staff, the teachers, the parents, donations, everyone was so on board to come and help us because, again, it was getting back to doing what we used to do. So thank you.
Now, we're going to go alphabetically with the 2K3 schools, so we'll begin with the, I'd love to recognize and thank the Brookside PTA for everything that they do for our school district. I'd like to invite President Ally O'Brien to the front, along with Luciana Highwall and Laura Peterson, please.
I'm short, I have to move this. I have to say that this has been an amazing year. Brookside has been able to start a lot of new initiatives and also continue initiatives. We, let's see, we were able to fund over 21,000 in class trips this year. We started a new third-grade legacy where they are now doing pavers, and families are able to leave their names as a mark on the school, and as each year, the graduating classes will continue that memory lane, as it's been so beautifully titled. We've had a successful color run, which we raised over $24,000, and with that, we were able to put up sales over the K1 playground, so the kids had some shade during, with these hot summer, leading up to the hot summer days. Oh, we partnered with Mohansick and did a pocketbook bingo, which was very successful and well-attended. And all of this wouldn't be possible without the support of my board, the endless support from the parent volunteers and the staff of Brookside, and especially Mr. Caserini and Dr. Sandor, who, whenever I asked, they said yes, as long as it's possible. So, thank you to everybody.
I just want to thank the leadership coming from the national PTSA, down from Dr. Hatter and the board. I think that leadership teaches us that sometimes it's better to have more volunteership jobs than it is to have the paid jobs. The impact that you make on other people's lives are the impacts that are going to not only teach our children how to give back into the community, but also stay and remain as an essential piece of the community. I want to thank all of the PTA members that sit before me, the PTA members that weren't able to attend, and also those that have, like, served before us. I think that we're only getting better, and the more that we work together, the more I see a great change. I think this community has a lot to offer when it comes to standing as a family. I look forward to seeing you all at the many, many events, and I look forward to you bringing your friends and dragging them to volunteer at the many, many events. I do want to thank our president for rallying us all up. All of us are very busy. And also to our custodial staff, who we miss Dustin very much, but we went down to one, and the truth is, it's amazing what the willpower happens when somebody wants to get something done. So, thank you.
And for our final building PTA, I'm honored to recognize the Mohansick PTA. I don't see co-president Liz Ackerly tonight, however, we do have co-president Maria O'Connell, Corinne Liguadice, Maria Morelli, and Gina Skoka here tonight to represent the Mohansick PTA.
Thank you to our Board of Ed, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Berry, Mrs. Fromer, our district, and the staff here at Yorktown. Your support is invaluable and so much appreciated. I value the relationship we built, and it's because of you our school is a better place for students to learn. I would like to thank our wonderful executive board, my co-president Liz Ackerly, who unfortunately couldn't make it, Kristen Hicks, our vice president, Corinne Lojudeis, our treasurer, Maria Morelli, our recording secretary, Erica Dugan, our corresponding secretary who couldn't be here tonight, and Gina Skoka, our district delegate. This was our first full school year back since COVID, and we really hit the ground running. We brought back so many wonderful programs and events, and this wouldn't be possible without you. There have been many late nights, early mornings, countless hours, a lot of texts to run, but we pulled it off, and I think we did an incredible job. Many of the ladies, we've been together for years, and we're sad to see a lot of you move on to Crompond. You'll really be missed, but Crompond is very lucky to have these dedicated devoted women on your team. Thank you to all the parent volunteers we've had throughout the year. This year, we had many new faces and the outpouring of support from each of our families. You are the reason why we are able to create fun and enriching programs at Mohansick for the children, because that's what it's all about, and that's why we do this. Lastly, I want to thank the students and the families of our district. It's a true testament to the remarkable community that we live in. I look forward to see what next year brings. Thank you.
And so, we have a couple of groups who I don't know if are in attendance tonight. We also want to recognize the Foundation for Excellence, Chris Metacow, I didn't hear from, so I don't see Chris either. So, we thank them for all of their support of our school district, most certainly. I also don't see the Science Research Foundation co-presidents. Correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't see Keith or Rosalia. Okay. So, our next group that we're delighted to recognize are the First Nighters, and I'd like to invite Shelby Graff and Mr. Armstrong, Craig Armstrong, to the front of the room. Thank you.
The First Nighters are a parent-run organization that supports the wonderful arts programs we have in the high school, and we support those programs financially. We write grants for things that might fall outside normal budget considerations. We also provide scholarships to graduating seniors in each of our disciplines. We also provide moral support. We try to be our students', our performers' biggest cheerleaders, and do things, like if you see it in the newspaper, the Spotlight on articles, where you get an interview with one of our singers, with one of our orchestra students, or one of our tech crew students. So, we're very proud of that. I'd like to thank Dr. Hatter and the administrators who show up and see these performances. Kids are there to perform for us. They want to see people in the audience. Very much appreciate that. I want to thank my daughter Isabel for teaching me that there is a second act for a father who can no longer coach softball, or lacrosse, or basketball, because both his daughters retired. And I'd like to thank our outgoing president Shelby, Shelby Graff, who put her hand up when this organization was about to go out of business, and she stepped in and made sure it kept going, kept it going through COVID. And we're very pleased that we have five new board members that are going to take over for the two of us who are retiring next year. So, again, thank you, board, for allowing us to speak. Appreciate it.
Next, I'd like to invite the Huskers Club to the podium. Chris Vogel, President; Lisa Tomine, Vice President; Missy Schluter, Jennifer Judge, Anthony Boccello, Kelly Duffy, Noelle DeBella, Samantha Greve, and I believe that's all attending this evening, but please come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Vogel. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Good evening, everyone. Just to give a little history of the Huskers Club, it was incorporated 45 years ago next month, largely started as a club to support the football program here at Yorktown. It certainly has evolved, and our goal, really, we strive to support all of our student athletes, regardless of season, regardless of sport, and just any athlete, any team, we want to smother and provide some support. I would say our marquee event is next Wednesday. Marquee event being a dinner at the Putnam Golf Club, where all students, senior student athletes, are welcome to join with the coaches, with their parents. It's a nice meal, it's a nice event. And Amanda, a special shout-out here, Catalyst Hours, producing just a wonderful sports journal that highlights the entire season in sports. So, it's a great board. Although Dr. Hatter gave us our jobs, we often call it outside the lines, help each other whenever we can, so it's really been a pleasure for me. We're also here to help the coaches, Rob Barrett, and we too thank the custodial staff for their amazing work. And as much as you're thanking us, I want to say for all of us, it's our honor and pleasure to be able to support Yorktown High School student athletes. Thank you.
I don't see Liz Talbert with the Alliance for Safe Kids, and so, we certainly acknowledge the wonderful partnership and relationship that we have with ASK, the Alliance for Safe Kids, and we thank them for all of their support. At this time, I'd like to, for the next group that we're going to honor, I'd like to invite Mr. Rosen to the podium with me.
Aramark Food Service is a vendor in our school district. They provide lunch service for your children, for my children, for our children, and they do it with a smile each day, and they do a great job. And I don't think anyone can question how beloved each member of the food service staff is within their respective schools. But tonight, we're recognizing them as a school partner, because they went above and beyond, most recently. They always do, but most recently, there were a couple of examples. The PTAs, I just want to cite one example, and then Mr. Rosen will cite the second example, and then we'll invite the staff up to acknowledge and recognize them. The PTAs hold a Superintendent for the Day fundraiser, and in fact, we just had our Superintendent for the day come in. It was a first-grade young man from Mohansick who spent an afternoon with me, just brainstorming the way a six-year-old would brainstorm, how to make our school district a better place. And inevitably, the conversation always goes to the lunch menu. So, I have a six-year-old young man, this time, in my office, his father and younger sister sitting with me, and the sister will be in kindergarten next year. And sure enough, I asked Mary Jo and Jerry to come in and sit down with me and the students so that we can make real change happen, and they give of their time. And they don't have to do it, but they come into my office, they bring their pencils and a notepad and the next month's draft menu, and we sit down and we get to work. And that's real market research, like Mary Jo says. And what this young man said is, "I want chicken nuggets and french fries on the menu." And Mary Jo says, "Well, we already have chicken nuggets and fries." And with the wisdom of a six-year-old, he says, "But not together." He said, "You serve them separately. I'd like them together." And sure enough, this past Friday, Mary Jo, Jerry, and the team made that happen, chicken nuggets and fries, and I called the father the night before, and I said, "Happy Chicken Nugget Day," because tomorrow, the work that your son put in is going to pay off, and I hope he takes credit with his classmates that he's the one who got chicken nuggets and french fries served together on our school menu. He asked for a couple of other things, and Mary Jo and Jerry really thought outside of the box to make that happen. We did the same thing last year, and it means so much to the students, to their families. They survey their classmates before coming in to meet with me to find out what the consensus in the class is and the lunch period. And so, I just, that's one example that people don't see. It's not readily evident, but that's what turns a contractor, a vendor, into a partner with our schools. And I just want to call upon Mr. Rosen to share one more really, really special experience. Mike?
Good evening, everyone. Last Wednesday, May 31st, the Yorktown Central School District had the privilege of hosting the Special Olympics Pioneer Dinner Dance, and we raised our hand to host this year. And when I raised my hand to host, I had one panic. How am I going to feed 280 people? I know I wasn't cooking. I had, I didn't know what to do, so I went to speak to Mary Jo and to Jerry. My thought was, in the past years, when the dinner dance was held, the big issue was, how do you keep the food warm? Because it was hosted in a gym, the food would be cold by the time, the athletes and the teams would show up, so I was thinking, maybe we could just use the servery, maybe we could pay the staff to help us out. So, Mary Jo and Jerry said, "Come down, meet with us, meet with us." And I did, and they first said, "Absolutely, let's figure this out." I followed up with them again, only to find out that the team at Yorktown High School was willing to volunteer their time, not only to serve the food. I then found out that the Aramark Corporation was donating all of the food for the 280 athletes, coaches, and aides that came into Yorktown High School for a dinner dance last week. I was in tears. It saved hundreds of hours. They were able to serve chicken parmigiana, tater tots, chicken nuggets and fries, I think would have been a good idea, so we'll have to think of that for next time. They had a penne. We had some gluten-free options that we did pick up. They had an ice cream bar for the students. They had Lyndon's Cookies, donate cookies. We had a hard time getting the athletes out of the cafeteria to go and dance in the gym because they were enjoying the food so much. It made the dance, and I want to thank Jerry and Mary Jo for all their work and volunteering. So, I did, and I have Mary Jo's bag to give back to her, but I do want to present, what's in the bag is a medal that, it's the same medal that all the pioneer athletes who are graduating received on the front. It says, "The Pioneer League 2023," with the sports that the teams play, which is soccer, basketball, and handball. But on the back, it's different. Instead of saying, "Congratulations for graduating," it just says, "Thank you." So, I have one for all of the members of the team. I also, in the bag, you will find some thank-you cards that were written by the Yorktown athletes, thanking you for all of what you did for that day. And last but not least, a picture of us. I debated putting myself in the picture or taking myself out, but I added myself in. You can always change it, but just a, I do have pictures without me, but I have just "Thank you" with the picture frame from the Pioneer Dinner Dance. "Thank you," and just "May 2023." And I just thank you so much for everything that you did that day and that you do all the time. Thank you very much.
I just want to share really, really quickly. First of all, welcome to Deb Smith. Deb Smith is Mary Jo's supervisor at the regional level, and we are honored to have Deb joining us this evening to celebrate her staff. I'd like to call up and acknowledge some of the individuals who are here in the audience tonight and say thank you. Mary Jo Hernandez, Food Service Director; Jerry Musitelli, Assistant Director; Shandy Lopez; Marian Dispenza; Mona Brahimi; Kristi Sika; Nancy Rizzo; Kim Kleiber; Rema Bazey; Josephine DeAngelo; Giovanna Sola. And if I missed you, please do come on up.
I quickly just want to share with everybody some facts about my team here at Yorktown. Aramark Student Nutrition has partnered with Yorktown for the last almost 20 years. Our team consists of 27 employees, and many of my staff members have or had children in this school district. Currently, I have 26 ladies and one lucky man that works throughout the school district. We have two employees that have served 20 years, two employees 15 to 19 years, eight employees that have served five to 14 years, and 15 with under five years of service. In total, that's approximately 170 years of experience that we offer at Yorktown School District each and every day, and some of my wonderful team members joined me tonight. Each day, we come to work at Yorktown because we really enjoy what we do. We love serving your children, but most importantly, because we feel like a partner. Our current example of this is what Mr. Rosen just spoke about, the Pioneer League Dinner Dance. Aramark prides itself on strong partnerships, and we can certainly say that the partnership here at Yorktown School District has grown in the last five years due to Dr. Hatter. My team and I thank you, Dr. Hatter, for this recognition, and thank you all.
We say it often, but you can feel it. The words may not be sufficient, they may not fully
They may not fully capture the relationships, the camaraderie, the support, that all-in feeling. So thank you to our school partners. I just want to take a moment to also acknowledge the school administrators who are here and the staff from our respective buildings and district offices. I appreciate you being here. You are so instrumental because you're the people who are interfacing with the relationships and the partners each day. So my thanks to all of our faculty, staff, administration who are in attendance this evening. School partners, thank you so much that you spend 364 days serving the children of Yorktown and serving the district. We thought at least on this one night, we would say thank you to you and how deeply we appreciate all that you do, but know that we're grateful far beyond just tonight. We're eternally grateful to you.
We're just very fortunate in this district to have so many families and so many people who are willing to volunteer and commit the time and the effort to make their district better. Everything you do is better for our children, so we just really appreciate everything you have done, so thank you. And Mary Jo, thank you. We can't thank Aramark enough for what they did for the Pioneer League, so thank you all very much.
So last but not least, there's one group of volunteers tonight that we haven't recognized, and that's our Board of Education. We are so fortunate to have this Board of Education working on behalf of your children, on behalf of this district every day. Sure, you see them for the two-hour meetings that we have twice a month, but what you don't see are all the other hours that they spend. They're all extremely busy, just like we all are. They all have their professional careers outside of Yorktown. They give hours and hours and hours. We have a two-hour policy meeting scheduled tomorrow that I'm sure we're all really looking forward to because we enjoy policy. We have steering committee meetings because we take pride in the look of our facilities and the facilities that our children are learning in. Audit committee meetings, fiscal advisory committee meetings, wellness meetings. There are so many additional things that our board does that may not be readily evident to ensure that the governance of this district is at the highest level. And so I ask you, and I just want to say thank you, and I just ask our audience to just give our board a round of applause. I have certificates for you that I will give once we take a recess, but if there are no other remarks. So at this time, we have the rest of our meeting that will continue. We recognize it's already been a relatively long evening. We'll take a brief, the board will take a brief five-minute recess to allow you the opportunity to exit. We ask that you do so so that we can move on. Know that you're welcome to stay. There are some other updates we'll be offering, or you're welcome to view the meeting tomorrow on our YouTube channel. But thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much for that good news, Ron. We really appreciate it. We're up to board comment number one, agenda-related items. Is that anybody? Nope, we're good. Okay, so we're going to move on to the superintendent's update.
Okay. So we have some updates on matters that were discussed at previous Board of Education meetings. The first is our pre-K program is up and running. The enrollment window has closed. However, it will actually remain rolling at this point because everyone who applied for admission has been granted admission to our pre-K program. It's so exciting that anybody in our community who has a child eligible to attend pre-K will have the opportunity to do so if they choose at no cost to the family. We have about 130 children who are registered, which means we have more room to grow and more room to offer. So the enrollment window, the first round, has closed. However, we'll continue now to have a rolling admission deadline until the spots are filled, which I don't anticipate will be the case based on the numbers now. My thanks to the YMCA of Central and Northern Westchester for their partnership. We're meeting every week at this point, and we're really hashing out all of the very specific details in terms of how classrooms will look, instructional program. I want to thank Mrs. Ammerling for all of her efforts in coordinating some of the supply needs and looking at instructional programs that we'll be offering in our pre-K program. And thanks to the entire central office cabinet for all of their work in making this a reality for us. And it's been quite exciting. I can't thank Brian enough for his communication with the families and emailing regularly. We really worked hard to make sure that everybody knew about the program. That's not an easy feat with people who aren't part of our school district yet. So we really exercised a lot of outlets, and Brian was integral in doing that, working with the town, working with Yorktown News Newspaper, and some of the other ways to publicize the program. So we're grateful for that. We will be offering pre-K next year, and that is such an exciting step for our school district. The, we have a, one more board meeting scheduled for next week, June 12th. We anticipate there will be two presentations at that meeting. We'll be hearing from the Mamassi Architect Group that will talk to us about some of the additional findings that they have had with regard to the, their walkthrough of the school buildings. And we'll be hearing from RWE, which is a group that came in. So as you know, we've been very committed, and the board has been very committed to looking at sustainability options and looking at ways to improve just, and reduce our consumption of electricity and natural resources. So we had, RWE is one of the biggest providers in the space, come in and look at every square inch of our schools and offer us recommendations. We've received the report. They'll be presenting the report to our board and to the community next week. I've actually had a meeting with the Yorktown 100 Group. I've invited them to that meeting so that they can hear the presentation as well, and we're looking forward to hearing what the recommendations are and navigating ways that we may or may not be able to implement the recommendations that are made. So that's exciting, and we're delighted that we were able to partner with RWE. RWE was formerly ConEd Solutions. So for the board and for members of our school community who are watching, the name ConEd Solutions was often used. They were a big player in the space. They were acquired by RWE, which is an even bigger organization in all kinds of sustainability options and alternatives. And so we're excited to hear what they have to say at the next Board of Education meeting. Also, I presented information about the stoparm update, the camera on stoparms for our school buses. There's legislation at the county level that is looking at providing school districts with free installations of cameras on the bus stoparms. So that is still pending. I followed up with the County Executive's Office last week, and the legislation is still pending. As soon as there is more information, they will follow that up with us. And we look forward to hearing back just to better understand what the opportunity is. So it's hard to take a position on it one way or the other. I think we need some more information. I did want to share with our school community, this is an item that I understand is of quite interest, and wanted to make sure that I provided an update. Still pending. Once more information is available at the county level, they will follow back up with us. I asked for my information to be included on their listserv as a send-out additional information. We have a lot of end-of-year events coming up. School years are winding down. There have been some great, great concerts. I've had the opportunity to say hello to so many people attending the concerts. It's so exciting to have a, what many are coining a normal end of the school year. The concerts have been wonderful. The spring athletic season is winding down. Congratulations to some of our teams that have taken home section championships, some of our track athletes who are breaking records and just doing some incredible things. We're so proud of all of our students. Science research tonight, I mean, to have a student, first of all, an STS Regeneron Scholar, top 300, that's incredible. To have somebody finish in second place in their category at ISIF, that's incredible. There are some really exciting things. As I look department by department, what we have accomplished this year, and I'll share more about that next week, what we have accomplished, it is just remarkable. And what a great school year it has been, and we'll continue to embrace the success but strive for improvement in 2324. But I thank you for the opportunity to provide this update, and as additional information becomes available on each of these topics, I'll be sure to follow up.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to board reports. So we'll start with policy. Cheryl?
Sure. We've met since my last update three times, on April 25th, and May 9th, and May 4th. Twice for the code of conduct, one was a regular policy meeting. We reviewed five policies, and we are on our final review of the code of conduct, which means that we're all going through and making final edits and any changes we need to make so that we have it available for a first read for the board on June 12th. Our next policy meeting is tomorrow, so we'll continue with our regular policy meetings. And at this point, I think we're wrapping up our final reviews of the code of conduct for distribution for next year, so we'll have it ready for next school year.
Thank you. Mike, fiscal?
Fiscal Advisory Committee is actually meeting again next Tuesday morning to look at end-of-year, wrap-up stuff.
Okay. Audit, Rashman?
Yeah, the committee met at the end of April with the internal auditor, so right now, we're in the process of finalizing the reports and also drafting the management response with Lisa's team. And those are going to be shared with the board shortly and put on the agenda for the next meeting for the 12th for approval. We also have another meeting coming up on June 21st with the external auditor to kick things off for the next school year. So that's all we have.
Thank you. And then Steering has been working on quite a few things. We're anticipating that they're going to start working on the Mohansik parking lot expansion at the end of June when school closes. We're out to bid on replacing the high school auditorium's stage flooring. That was a long process. And we are still, like Ron said, working with our architects on next steps for the building usage issues that we have, primarily at Mohansik in Brookside, but district-wide, we're looking at what Mamassi has seen, and it's nice to have a new, fresh set of eyes on our buildings and to see where we can go forward. And we'll just continue to work through the summer because that's what Steering does. All right, we're going to move on to policy. I have a motion, conduct a second reading and adopt, a motion to adopt the following policy. It is 4513, library material selection. Do you have any questions on it? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Under personnel, a recommendation of, on recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have appointments and several resignations, and under classified personnel, we have additions to the substitute list.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Business office, a motion to approve the Geese Relief vendor agreement for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, for a fee of $382 per week pending receipt of required insurance documents, total cost not to exceed $19,864.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion, a resolved to a recommendation of the superintendent, the board approves a service agreement with ComSource to provide remote managed service support for voice services in the amount of $24,835.80, and to provide the implementation of the Cisco Emergency Responder in the amount of $8,050 for the 2324 school year pending receipt of required insurance documents.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A resolved to a recommendation of the superintendent, the board authorizes the execution of the 2023-24 initial contract for Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie Services. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Resolved to a recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Yorktown Central School District hereby accepts a proposal submitted by Manpower for campus greeters and monitor services for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and resolves that the board president is hereby authorized to execute the agreement with the Manpower for annual renewals for a total of five years at the discretion of the Board of Education.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Resolved by order of the Supreme Court of the State of New York, held in and for the County of Westchester on the 8th day of May 2023, the Board of Education approves a tax refund, school tax refunding the amount of $1,497 is due to Kitchwan Barnes LLC for the tax year 1920. Be it further resolved that the board hereby appropriates and makes transfers from the Tax Cerceary Reserve Fund to the General Fund in the amount of $1,497 for the payment of the 2019-20 tax refund.
Discussion.
So moved.
Do we expect any more?
Wait, wait, wait. I need a motion in the second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion. Do we expect any more of these coming up anytime soon?
We do have others in the pipeline. I just don't know the timeframe as to when those will get pushed through to us.
They keep coming. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion to approve the following vendor agreement, Dr. Carl Oris contracted to provide psychiatric evaluations for students residing in the Yorktown Central School District for the 2324 school year at a rate of $1,800 per evaluation pending receipt of required insurance documents.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Under special ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of June 5th, 2023.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. The Yorktown High School Athletics, $1,000 from an anonymous donor for the Jason Foley Memorial Scholarship Fund, $2,594.74 from the parents of the ice hockey team for ice time, and at the middle school, $1,006 from the middle school PTA for the eighth-grade field trip and the eighth-grade commencement dance. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We're up to board comments. Pete?
I'm good, thank you.
Catalina?
I just want to thank all the PTA presidents and everybody who volunteers for our students.
Mike?
Yeah, it was a great night to recognize all of our partners, especially the PTAs. It was also great to notice our science research students. They do such amazing work, and they deserve a lot of accolades that they receive, so thank you.
Rashman?
Yeah, congratulations to our science research students. I love seeing our Boy Scouts here tonight in the meeting. I have an Eagle Scout myself, so I know the work that goes into it, so thank you for joining us and working away on your merit badges. Also, I think it's a really wonderful tradition that Dr. Hatter started to recognize our school partners. They work tirelessly for our students and to provide them with opportunities that are outside of what we do in the school, so congratulations to all of them.
Cheryl? I want to say a great congratulations to our science research program. We really do have an outstanding program, and I wish the seniors the best of luck as they move on to the next part of their journey. They truly are going to do some great things, and they are definitely going to be the leaders of tomorrow. School partner recognition night is always such a wonderful night. I think we've all on the board been there. We've all done what they do, and we truly recognize all the extensive hours they put in to expand and enrich the educational process or the education that our students have in this district. So we really do thank them so much. So thank you, Dr. Hatter, for hosting the night.
Lisa?
So I'll just echo what everybody said. Congratulations to the science research students. They are amazing. And to our school partners, like Cheryl said, we've all been there, and we know what it takes to give of your time, give from your family, your work, taking care of all the things that make our students' day very happy. But I'd also like to thank Dr. Hatter, Ms. Ammerling, and Ms. Sanfilippo. Although you're not volunteers, you go way above and beyond the call of duty and your responsibilities, so thank you to you guys.
I echo what everybody said. It was wonderful to see school partners, their science research kids are amazing. I had the opportunity, and Catalina was there, we went to the Pioneer Dinner Dance. And Mike Rosen, who unfortunately is leaving us this year, did a phenomenal job, and I'm so happy that the kids got to have that dinner dance in our new gym and our new cafeteria. Aramark was amazing, but everything you did, Mike, for that dinner dance to make it special was amazing, so thank you very much. I'm so happy that we got to actually host that for them. So that's it, Ron. Do you have anything? Okay.
We're up to our second public comment. Nobody? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Good night, everyone.